Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to report that we're just fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Do you want to add something?
I want to add, uh, six twenty to the policies.
That'll be number nine?
Yeah, I'm down for first reading.
Somebody got that? Number nine? So, do we have a motion to approve the agenda, let's hold change?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Uh, we have a resolution, hold a closed meeting for negotiation strategy at the end of the meeting. Have a motion for that?
Motion.
Oh, second. Okay, motion by Ron, second by Joe.
It will have to be in the library because we have no other place to meet. The conference room is still totally filled with stuff stored from other rooms.
Okay, so we're gonna go off, but then go back on?
And we'll quick off the board cam, and then everyone will be asked to leave, and we will meet in here, and then when we're done, I'll open the door and let them back in, and we can adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Any more should we have a second? Some discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This time we have minute for public comment? Thank you. Consent items?
Um, I would ask that we set, um, personnel number four, the retirement, and deal with that separately following the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
With the change?
With the change.
Okay, we have a second by Kevin. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we want to talk about the retirement of Shelley.
Um, I drafted a resolution, I'd like to make a motion to put into consideration, a resolution on the retirement of Shelley Jervis. Um, so you can read it there, it's in the board packet, just got uploaded a while ago. Whereas Shelley has been a part of the Houston Public School District family for forty-three years, and whereas Shelley has been a caring teacher, mentor, and role model to countless Houston elementary students, and a quiet, calming presence in the lives of many anxious, anxious high Houston students of all ages, and an encouraging, nurturing teacher leader within this school district's Title I program, and whereas Shelley has been instrumental in originating Summit Learning Center, and in facilitating the effective instruction that has occurred there for many years, and in bringing innovation in teaching methods to improve reading literacy to the Houston School District via the initial Teaching Alphabet Foundation, and whereas during the course of her tenure as district librarian, Shelley has faithfully led the library paraprofessionals and the library processes through a complete shift from manual library records to electronic systems, and provided counsel in the conversion of a traditional high school library to a multipurpose learning media center. And whereas Shelley will be missed for her quiet supportive teamwork with colleagues and support for students within Summit Learning Center, and willingness to serve on many school committees within the district, now therefore be it resolved that the Houston School Board wishes to thank Shelley for her amazing forty-three years of dedicated service, and wishes her all the very best in her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's quite a legacy.
I sat down there, and I gotta tell you, the woman is the heart and soul of that, of that facility. You know, she made it happen.
I'll vote for adoption of this resolution.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
Second by Joe. Discussion, further discussion, like Kevin said, she's an amazing person, she'll be very missed at this school. A big part of the school for a lot of years.
Yep.
A lot of years. Gave her heart and soul to this site.
Yes, she has.
Quiet, straight.
Yeah, exactly.
Big tag.
So.
The crystal ball is not going to even remotely come close to thanking her. She was to get the crystal ball.
Not a wing name after nothing. Okay, so, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Shelley. Discussion items? First thing on the agenda, Iowa Valley Education District, we have.
Mrs. Deb Markat.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I have some handouts, so I might ask you to take one and pass it around, and then will they just go all the way around? Is that an option? I don't know how much time I have, I should ask that question first. I can do the three-minute, the thirty-minute, or the three-hour party.
Someone between three and thirty.
Okay. All right, so you tell me. It's good. Thank you very much for coming. I really do appreciate you being willing to hear from us at Hfed, and particularly tonight, I want to speak to some of the things that we have done in our strategic plan. As a board presentation, I think it's typical that board members appreciate knowledge of and progress toward strategic plans, am I correct on that? Okay, so, my name is Deb Markat, I'm the Executive Director. I have been in this role since September, so it'll be a year in a few months, and in that time, I've had the opportunity to work with board members. Kevin is the rep for our Hfed board, he also serves on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and he's given more of a work out there than he had maybe anticipated, but we've got to know each other very well. Chris has been attending the superintendents' meetings, as have the principals, attending principals' meetings, and I've gotten a chance to work with the business manager, as we've done a fair amount of work with things like procedures, which has been a lot of fun, and some challenge, but mostly fun. So, so I am working more and more as I, as I get to know the staff within our facility, and the functions that we do within your districts, and then also your staff. So, I'm just looking forward to being held in about more this coming year. So, with that said, I think everybody has a copy, and I just wanted to review the five basic components of our strategic plan, and they're numbered, and then I wanted to focus on the highlighting elements. So first, for communication, it has been something that we've really put as, at the forefront, and that's finding ways to communicate better with not only our internal staff, but also our member districts. And so you see things listed there. We've made monthly meetings for our superintendents, and our principals, advisory meetings of priority. We have done monthly newsletter updates, you've kind of seen those updates, and Kevin has been attending meetings, and he may be bringing that back to you. We also send that out to the superintendents, so that they know that, and hopefully they can forward that to individuals as appropriate. So we're making a point of communicating, and we're going to continue that with upgrades to our website coming this year, and we're just continuing to look for, for ways to, to not only market the things that we do, so that people are aware of that, but also provide a service and a resource for teachers and parents of students throughout all of Hfed. So we're working on that. The next item, number four, is our organization, and we're looking at integrating continuous improvement practices through Hfed, that's the actual goal, and we're focusing, there's several things I could have chosen here, but I chose to focus on MTSS. You see the graphic? You may recognize some of the terms that surround it, professional learning communities, for example, and what we're doing there is, we've created leadership teams from each of the districts. The leadership teams include administration, a general ed teacher, a special ed teacher, and a school psych. The school psych is an Hfed employee. So that team of at least four, but it could be more, depending on the district, at least four, has begun to look at some elements that will enhance instruction. So for example, we had a kickoff in April, this last April. We will be, we have committed to meeting twice a year, and I need to point out that the dates are selected here, October third to April third. So we are going to hold each other accountable to the things that we say we're going to do. We're gonna set some goals, we're going to reflect on those goals, which means we're going to look into the practice of instruction. What we want to secure is that when initial instruction occurs in the classroom, if a student doesn't receive the appropriate lesson or understand material initially, then we have research-based effective strategies at the ready, that then we will monitor over time, and then if students need more and more help, they will eventually be ready, and we'll have the data at the ready to qualify them for special education. That's if they need that level of expertise. Now you know this process already as RTI. You've heard of RTI before? MTSS is basically a new name for the same sort of system. And so although Hfed helps with the special ed piece, and the school psychs that do the testing for that, we are hoping to provide the opportunity to share resources across the district, so, districts plural, so that everyone can learn from each other, because I know there's really good things happening here in this district, I know a few of them already, I mean, they've been highlighted for me. But if they're really good things, we'd like to replicate them across districts, and then Houston can also learn from other districts, depending on what the topic is. Not everybody is an expert at everything, but together we are experts, and we can raise the standard of education across the whole region. So that's what we're looking to do. Easy, right? But it's, it's, it's a noble challenge, and we've got really good people doing really good work, and, and so it's very exciting. I wanted to highlight a couple of other things. Under four B, you see Odysseyware is highlighted. I don't recall if Houston used Odysseyware before, yes they did?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
A lot.
Yes. So what have, Odysseyware, you know all about this program, am I correct?
Summit.
Yep, it's a digital curriculum, which means it's online, and it's always being renovated, correct? It means Minnesota standards and all the good things. We have adopted that across Hfed. So schools are able to purchase what they need, isn't the number of seats they need to meet their needs, through our agency, through Iowa Valley Education District. What that does, and if you jump down to number five, you see economy of scale, what we've done is apply that principle to the purchase of Odysseyware, and the very last sentence you'll see that is, isolated districts purchasing up to twenty seats, each seat costs one thousand dollars. As collaborative districts purchasing a hundred and sixty-two seats, and that was the order as of June tenth, each seat cost only four hundred and seventy-five, which is still an expensive package, but it's half the price of what you would be paying individually. You pay roughly, do you get a better deal than that?
Um, we were at five seats because multiple students can use the same seat, because when they're done with the class, then if the year's not done, another kid can come in and take another class and use that same seat, so five seats were what we needed, but I think we were paying eight hundred.
Yeah.
And so this is, we're going to be buying the seats through Hfed's contract and saving money, so it's, it's a win-win.
Yes, it's a huge win-win, and then it, it makes kind of the curriculum across the districts somewhat common, not identical, but common, and so if students move about, which they sometimes tend to do, or if we just learn better practices, we can share that with one another more easily. So that concept of economy of scale, we're looking at using that in other places too, because everyone is looking at saving money, being the most efficient and effective as possible. The other thing I want to point out, which is for C, is that our number of sites throughout Hfed has been reduced. Last year, we operated and owned six sites. This year, for the sixteen-seventeen school year, it will be at three sites, which is Kellogg, Winona, and Calidonia. So that will be savings in not only the facilities itself, but also the staff, and so we're looking at, if that's the right size, if we're in the right locations, right Kevin? My Kevin, he's had this conversation a hundred times, and it will be a hundred more times, but we're looking at meeting everybody's needs. We cover a pretty large geographic area, you are very aware of that, and so we're looking at what's the best fit for everybody. That's everything on my handout, do you have any questions?
Deb, can you tell, I mean, we serve up from Chatfield to Mable.
La Crescent to Waukesha, yes.
Plainview.
Yes.
Big area.
Dorreota, you know, St. Charles, Lewiston, Chatfield, Williamsburg, Russian Peterson, Houston, Little Caesars, Springfield, Calidonia, La Crescent, a couple of charter schools. We have an ALC, you have an ALC. We have two Level Four EBD programs, you know them as WIN and SALE. We've started an ASD program at Calidonia as well.
And we utilized there the ASD program at Calidonia last year for one of our students.
And that is a brand-new program as of last year, and it's, I got a real strong foundation, and we're hoping to expand those programming, so we are hearing that the need is there. Yes, so.
I got a good question.
Yes.
I just see on here, human resources, retaining and track, highly qualified employees, how do you plan on doing that?
Well, very carefully. And what we're trying to do is, is internally be the strongest and most supportive organization that we can be to support teachers as they're in the field, and we are actively marketing. We're looking at developing, in fact, have started developing relationships with Winona State, UWL, St. Mary's.
But how are you gonna retain them?
We retain them by being more than just the highest-paying job in the area, and we may be in some areas, but may not either, but we are gonna have an unbelievable culture to work for. I mean, we're gonna be the best place to work, and I think that's how we keep people. When teachers, a lot of teachers, I don't know, you have teachers in the room? No teachers? Sometimes teachers go in to education for the big bucks. Many times, I'm saying, sometimes, many times they go into it because they've got a passion for kids, and so that's what we're gonna support.
Got it.
And there might be teachers who have logged on and are watching.
Very good. So if you went into it for the big bucks, you may or may not be disappointed, but if you went into it for, because of a passion for kids, we can assure you, you won't.
And I just want to thank you. It has been wonderful working with Hfed this year.
Thank you.
It's been a very supportive relationship. You have been able to adapt to what we've needed, and I truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just on Joe's question, and not to belabor the past a great deal, but prior to Deb coming, we were at about twenty-five percent turnover a year, per year. And I will say that I, I think that this definitely can happen, and it can happen because what Deb has brought is a, is, is an aura, if you will, or a management style that's based on honesty, communication, and respect, and that creates an environment that keeps people, and keeps them happy, and empowers them to do their best.
Yeah.
And you do them.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any more questions? Thanks a lot for coming.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We read a lot about you from Kevin.
Really? Really?
There wasn't any big issues?
All good information. Okay. MNBA Teacher Handbook?
Angela, we're now on the MNBA Teacher Handbook section.
Hello, well, first I want to thank everyone for letting me participate this way. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So, you should have got my zip file, you probably have my paper copies, but it contains the now-merged MNBA Teacher Handbook, and I did my best attempt at summarizing for all the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, in terms of all the changes that were impacted as a result of merging into one handbook. So, admittedly, it's probably very hard to understand and follow, so I'll do my best in terms of providing a summary for you. So when looking at the Teacher Handbook, I felt it was probably most important, since we are all one school, and our staff really should be held as often as possible to the same expectations, we really should have one handbook. And in reviewing them, I would say there's, there were a lot of consistencies across all three handbooks. The biggest difference, I would say, is in the omissions. So there were a lot of times when something was cited in a handbook, it was cited in all three handbooks, but there were a lot of instances where something was maybe cited in the elementary handbook and not in the other two, or it was cited in the high school handbook and not in the other two. So really, most of the changes that we ended up doing is just adding things so that it's across all three schools. So one example was that there was an expectation in the elementary handbook, in terms of teachers' expectations for Class Connect, that was not existent in the middle school and the high school, yet I know that in terms of practice, that's what they've been doing. So they were essentially following the same procedure, it just wasn't actually entered into the handbook. So what you have in front of you is, is kind of a merged handbook that provides consistent procedures and policies for all of our teaching staff across grades K through twelve. There are going to be some differences that need to happen, simply because the role of an elementary teacher is oftentimes very different than the role of a high school teacher. So when it comes to doing report cards in the high school, they're on a semester-based, and in the elementary, middle school, they're on a quarter-based. So those distinctions will remain, and those are still highlighted in there, so you'll see some categories where, Report Cards is one example, Class Connect is another, where it kind of gives a summary of what the expectation is, and then it'll break it down and say, elementary, here's what the expectation is, middle school, here's what you do, high school, and so forth. So it allows us to then have some uniform, consistent practices, but also allow for those distinctions. So I would say that's kind of an overview of the changes that have happened. I'd be happy to answer any specifics that you have, and, like I said, I don't know that there's anything I necessarily need to highlight, other than that the biggest changes really were making sure that those omissions across the handbooks were tied up, that we were making sure that all staff were held to the same expectations.
The other thing I'd like to note that Angela did is making sure that where there was something outlined in the procedures manual, that that's referenced, and so that the teachers get used to knowing where to find things, and the teachers are directed to knowing where to find things, and so there, there's that consistency, and there's that, the links for communication that exist.
Anybody have any questions for Angela?
That sounds like.
Sorry, is that a question I couldn't hear?
No.
Well, I just had a comment, it sounds like that was a lot of work, and I want to thank you for undertaking that challenge.
Thank you, yeah. At first, it was very daunting, and I think I had to step away from it for a little bit, just to kind of figure out how I wanted to organize it, but then once I got my head wrapped around it, it did fall together pretty easily. But yeah, I think the biggest thing was just kind of understanding what the expectations were, and being able to put that into one document, but yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to stay on, or?
Um, I can flip over to the other session, you don't have to keep me on Skype.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Long-term facility maintenance update?
Um, we have reached over halfway, so we're on the other side of the hill now, which, considering the fact that summer's half gone, that, that's a good thing. You'll notice that the front of the building, with the brickwork that is being done, it doesn't quite match what picture we were given, but that's better, because George Kittleson is actually the person that did the brickwork on the two additions before he was drafted in nineteen sixty-eight. And so he is matching the brickwork totally, and so you'll see that there's extruded bricks all around the windows, on the sides, and the bottoms, so it absolutely matches the other parts of the building, and so it's even better than what the picture was that you guys approved. And I, to have that kind of added benefit, where it's going to really look like one school, it is, that's a plus.
Were there any surprises when they ripped off the old stucco?
Uh, yes, that the old stucco was buried, because the stuff that was falling apart had separated, they had actually buried the, the stucco, and that the reason it was soaking up so much water is because that the insulation was just kind of buried and raw, and the reason it's not as much of a problem on the south side is that gets sun all the time. The north side was constantly in the shade, and so it never, it never got a chance to really dry, and so it was just, so they had to dig down six inches, and so it was just, they were, I thought it was just kind of falling apart, well, it was, but it, what we were getting were actual holes in that.
Of no other nature, structural deterioration.
Nope, nope, yes. So that, it came off, interesting to watch that pull off. They did have an issue that not all the windows are at the same height, so when it was installed, it wasn't, when the, the new facade was put on, there wasn't careful measuring, so George is working around that, so we don't have to redo all of the drywall inside. The state plumber approved our plumbing last Friday, and so that is now, the DCD project in the bathroom is now working toward getting completed. At the elementary school, we did have an issue with the ceiling tiles that had been bid in the hallway, that, that architect made an error in the type of ceiling tile, we can't, we had to have commercial grade, and he did not put that in the bid. So we now have that fixed, and new tiles on order. The tiles might not be in before the start of the school year, however, that, we can start school with the grid there, and, and not the tiles, but the, the tiles can be popped in as soon as they get here. So that's, that has been basically the only thing. I would say that, that's been the biggest glitch, and that's not really much of a glitch at all.
Are the replacement tiles that are commercial grade, the same style as?
It's the same style, yes.
Same thing?
Same style, it's just a, it's a.
Slash, same charge.
The ones that he put were plastic, the, the plastic ones are not deemed acceptable for commercial, and so we had to go with metal ones. So that does require us to bring the sprinkler heads through the, the ceiling, so that was, but the sprinklers are already pointing down, so it's just an extender rod on each sprinkler, so that's really not much of a overrun there at all.
How about the archways? How are they looking?
They look good. They're, they actually match the exact curvature of the archways, if you think of the two rooms up on the steps, on the upstairs, where the arch was a little flatter and a little lower, we, we matched that on every door, so now every arch is consistent with those We had to take some trees out, and the chiller tree, the tree by the chiller was slated to be taken out when we were going to get the big wall around the chiller, and now that we're going with the fence, it's also necessary to take that tree out, so it doesn't drip sap all over the chiller.
What's going on? Ahead of the game? So.
I had no, on track, yes. So we will, this is where everything needs to really start falling together, and we're getting, we've got people here all the time from all kinds of different companies, it's amazing how many people are here today.
Any issues on the roof?
At the elementary school? No, it's just coordinating, getting the parts of the roof done, so they can put the structural steel on, so they can put the equipment up on the roof, because we wanted to make sure that we had the structural steel in place, so that the roof itself was not going to take the brunt of the weight of the, the equipment that was going up there. not going to take the brunt of the weight of the, the equipment that was going up there.
Any other questions?
Well, just, um, I know that back ways, we talked about putting those edges on, and we kind of ruled that out, but I never gave thought to the idea that you could almost put those edges on in extruded brick, and they'd be more subtle and have it white letters out there, but still kind of accomplish kind of a little bit of architectural additional accoutrements, I don't know what you call it.
We are looking at, um, Todd called, uh, a representative from La Crosse Sign, and we're, we're looking at signage, because we need better signage here anyway, so people know where the district office is, and, um, the representative that came here said that he had developed a plan for signage for this building for Marilyn from Crombier, and had submitted it to her, and, um, she had asked for all kinds of additions to it, and then it never went anywhere, so I don't know if the board ever saw any plans for signage when Marilyn still worked here or not.
Not that I remember.
He said he will put together a plan, and, and you will see the plan.
Well, I like Ron's idea.
But the brick, the brick is already getting-
But it's not, it's only started. It's not too late.
I mean, when you said that George was kind of, you know, is George doing this work?
Yes, he is. Yes, he is, and, and that's part of the reason that he-
Well, if he's going to poke a few bricks out here and there, why not poke a few more out?
It's, the, the reason that he bid this is because, other than the short little stub walls on the existing, the 1957 section, for the, the two 68, 69 sections, George did the brickwork on those two additions, uh, before he got drafted. So he wanted to say, if anyone's going to do the brickwork on this building, he wanted it to him.
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All business. Items for discussion? Huh? Item for discussion approval? Um, team building, training. Michaeline?
Well, there's a long document with definitions, descriptions. Just brainstormed a list of things from conversations on the last, from, uh, following the last two board meetings. I, I think that this is nothing that needs action tonight, it just need to know if the board is wanting to move forward. Um, I alphabetized them, uh, developing an in-house superintendent board leadership meeting, as we did in the past, um, doing some fun by attending an escape room, that was just a team building activity, takes an hour, fairly inexpensive, um, sort of, activity, doesn't really do anything for a strategic plan, or doesn't really do anything for the school, does more for maybe, you know, just taking a chill with one another. Um, hire a strategic planning consultant, that's often on the table. Um, we've done that before, we've, it's been a while since we've done it, we have not had a lot of, I think we've felt that we've had a lot of success, maybe we have a plan that I'm going to. Participate in some of the online courses for board governance, course participation. I found several universities that offer courses in, um, board governance, in nonprofits. They're not necessarily public school boards, but they're nonprofit, nonprofit boards, um, trained to behave, something outside of just what the MSBA offers. Uh, and then the MSBA, one of their, um, new goals as an organization is to be more of a go-to organization for school districts, and to provide more training. And so they have, um, two types of workshops, one that we've done before, one that is called the Board Self-Assessment and Evaluation, and we did that one in the past, although it appeared to me in reading through it and in talking to Sandy Gunlock, that they have re, they have revisited it and have it spelled out, the activity, a little bit differently, and I think better than when we went through it probably four years ago. And the new one that they have is called Developing Mutual Expectations, and this is a retreat setting, which allows the board to sort of, um, sort of have a workshop about just discussing and putting on the table and airing what are the expectations of the board of the board, or the board of the chair, the chair of the board, the board of the superintendent, and so forth, any configuration you want, and they will customize it to what the board feels, um, they want their focus to be. So there's a lot of things on there for you to look at, um, I don't know, it's probably making it tougher than easier to make a decision, but that's what I came up with for your consideration.
It's supposed to be a short menu, not a-
Sorry?
Okay. On the MSBA ones, do they come here, do you do those?
Uh, retreat setting or here, they cost, I put the costs where I could find them. Uh, the MSBA board development options are of nine, $950, they last two to three hours. Um, so those things that I could find a cost for, I included it, I included. Of course, doing the in-house had very little cost and probably good outcomes for the cost, but it kind of depends on what we think we need. There you have it.
Thanks for doing the follow-up.
Thanks, Michaeline. We should look it over, and everybody kind of do feedback on it, if you get a chance. Yeah, we just have, anybody send it to Ann on thoughts, if you have one particularly you'd like to maybe do as a board? Everybody give their two cents, and then see where it goes. Now, we get a majority of people that want to do one, then maybe we can look, focus in on that one. Sound good?
What if I, I could do a, I think I can develop a survey monkey, and just you can weigh in that way.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
People can just respond with that way if they're interested in more, we should, I don't, it just might be easier than people saying, oh, I got to think about this and send an email and-
No, no, that's a good idea, Michaeline. Now, if you could do that, that'd be great.
Okay, if you have any other ideas to add to the list, please send them to Ann, she can send them to me, and I will include them.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thanks, Michaeline. Um, use in high school handbook?
Student handbook, Todd was not able to be here tonight, he's in Portland, um, on a training for, um, improving school culture with some of his teachers. Um, the handbook is there, the, um, changes, there, there is some wording as far as the, Minnesota Honor Society, um, and so it's, it's all in. Okay, the updates there, um, the Minnesota Honor Society there under number three is probably one of the, um, the biggest additions, because that takes the place of the National Honor Society.
So one question, and it doesn't really relate to this particular handbook, but, um, is MNVA going to go to Minnesota Honor Society, or they stay in the National Honor Society?
Last year, the decision was made that, that this year, they would go to the Minnesota Honor Society and away from National Honor Society.
Okay. So probably this language is, I didn't find it, I didn't read the MNVA high school handbook cover to cover, so it has to be in there, it's probably in there.
Anybody have any questions on that? Are we approving the decision, or with the changes, or?
Yeah, this is all business.
Yeah. So we have a motion to approve the, uh, high school handbook? So moved. Okay, motion by Gary. Second by round, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? MNVA high school handbook.
Motion to approve.
Second motion, and second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
MNVA middle high school handbook, motion to approve.
Second.
Ron, second by Joe, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, MNVA K through five.
Motion.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Ron. Discussion.
Um, I just want to, again, thank Angela and Corinne for whoever worked together in this, because I know when we considered the handbooks a year ago, I found them completely confusing, completely like, they seemed like they were coming from different districts. Um, and so I really appreciate the work that's gone to try to bring these together.
And my input was they need to be consistent, it was Angela, the two Angelas.
And thank you to the Angelas, and whoever participated in that, and proofread, and provide a comment and feedback.
Okay, so a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, approving the authorization. Small district 10-year plan to Minnesota Department of Education.
We were given different ways that we could, um, approve our 10-year plan and submit it to MDE. This is, um, it seemed like the, the least painful way to do this. Uh, with our long-term facility maintenance revenue application, with 10-year expenditures, you've seen this before, it's basically the same one that was submitted last year, with the addition of what we spent for asbestos abatement. That was added in the 2017 year column. With any other, uh, projects that we want to do, if we want to do building onto the elementary school, if we want to do demolition of the preschool, or not, no, 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 demolition of the house next to the preschool. Yeah, I, I knew there was a man in the back row that was going to have a heart attack. Um, if, if we were going to demo that house, that can't be paid for with long-term facility maintenance funding. Granted, the State Department says we should have a plan for those things, but we can't include that in this funding mechanism. So, and as far as long-term facility maintenance, right now, we are doing virtually everything we can.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve?
It's the resolution, so someone needs to read the resolution.
We didn't prepare. We just- We need our closed meeting resolution.
Oh.
Yeah, pass it.
Yeah. Are we reading it silently?
Yes.
Is it going too fast?
Yeah.
Well, we need a roll call vote.
Yeah, it's a roll call vote. Thank you. We need someone to move the resolution.
We have a motion to move the resolution. So moved.
Okay.
Good.
Now you can read it.
No, he's introducing it, and so, and so now someone's second.
Now we have a motion for second, okay. Kevin, thank you. Now, we need a roll call. Sorry to be, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Since there isn't really a, I guess we, I missed the-
Discussion?
The discussion opportunity, um, not regarding this, but regarding, um, potential planning for the demolition of the building next to the preschool, or for planning for a potential multipurpose room or addition to the elementary school, or any facilities type planning outside of the long-term facilities maintenance revenue. How are we going to do that? And I think we need that. I mean, we, we set about to do that, but we didn't get very far when we tried it at a special meeting. I think we need to try again.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, do you? I mean, and find out what, we kind of said what kind of things we were interested in, but-
They'd have to be two different entities, right? Because this, you can only do so much on this.
Well, the, it's not on this, this is just a whole separate-
Yeah, it's got to be a separate thing.
Separate funding, separate, you know, what do we want to do, then, then you stay on the lookout for revenue, funding sources, right? But we know what we want to pursue, when the funding's in place, or maybe if the budget will allow us to.
Well, we'd have a board meeting on it.
Are you talking about going through and having a wish list?
A prioritized wish list.
Kind of look at what we had on the other one.
Maybe big projects versus small projects.
Yeah.
Where are the priorities?
Take what we eliminated from our list, which what we're doing right now, take what we have on this, that can't be part of the other wish list, and then start putting that back together, like the demolition, and the additions, and anything else that we've talked about.
I, I feel that the facilities and grounds committee has done that, I mean, has been doing that job, but it would be nice, I think, as a whole board, to sort of be mindful of where we'd like to go, and then when things come up, facilities, you know, that sort of sets the plan aside, or-
Well, we set up a time so we can do just that.
So facilities committee?
Yeah, take what we've got accomplished or accomplishing, that was on our original list that we had so long ago, of things, with like the bleachers and everything else that we've, and then look at all the other things that we haven't done, or, you know, are-
Present that.
Present that to the board, as this is what's still on our wish list, that we didn't get on this initial one, and we can kind of prioritize them, as far as how the facility committee sees them, and then bring it across the board and see if there's anything else we want to add to that list, and then change it.
Well, we have, we have numbers from UNESCO on the, the multipurpose addition.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have any numbers on the demolition and other plans?
Yeah, we did have, we had a price that we got, I think Rick got us a price of a certain amount of dollars.
Andy.
Andy did, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And we can put that down.
Right, okay.
Just compile what we know, and then other things that we've talked about, and if there's things that other people have, we can add to it.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm a tree hugger, I'm not opposed to trimming dead trees and trees that are a safety hazard, but I am about green spaces, and I would like the facilities committee to look at, um, maybe inviting students or teachers and, you know, doing some green space planning.
Yeah, we talked about that a couple of years ago, about that.
I don't know what's on the list, so I, Jason's pine tree trees are coming down.
Right, right, we talked about that. Well, that was, but yeah, we can, let's put that, make sure that that's on the list, because that was part of our list before, remember with that, Jason, is that what his name was?
Yes, I remember that, I don't know what happened to that, so.
Well, I think it just kind of got put on the back burner, I believe, it just never, but we, like you said, Michaeline, we want to keep it on the list and part of the discussion. Well, we cleaned off a lot of things.
Yes, we do.
You know, from what we had on this.
This summer, we're, we're taking care of a lot of the back burner things.
But I think if we regroup and see where we're at, and I don't know when, you know, you said I'll have Ann send our emails, see when we can get together.
Okay.
I'm assuming it'll be beginning next month.
Well, our next board meeting is August 2nd.
Yeah, I do it before that, Gary, or?
Whatever.
You know, maybe something like that, beginning.
Okay.
We get everything together by then? Okay, let me do that.
Okay.
So a new business, item for discussion approval, and it's E A membership?
Uh, the membership fee really hasn't changed, um, but- Membership fee really hasn't changed, but considering it's under $7,000, considering how much we use them, we get our monies with the MSBA.
Move to approve?
Oh.
Okay.
It's not due until November.
Yeah.
So we could think about it in case anyone wants.
Do you really think about it?
We can't, we can't use the policy services. The policy renewal is.
We've paid it plenty lately for and then you want to use policy services, but fine, you placed a motion.
Motion again, Michaeline, second discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have a van purchase? I know this is something that we've talked about in the past.
You've actually already approved the van purchase through the budgeting process. And I know typically, once that's done, the van hasn't been brought back to the board. But I'm just looking at the dollar amount and I know that technically we wouldn't have to have board approval on it, but the van is $20,000. It's a great deal on a 2015 van, leather seats, so it's very easy to clean. It's got the stow-and-go seats, so if we need it to turn into more of a cargo van, the seats fold right into the floor and we could put a four-by-eight sheet of plywood in there. So it's, it's got the flexibility that we need in a van. Dan also looked around for white. We went with Dan Peterson Networks at Sugarloaf Ford in Winona. And Sugarloaf is really trying to carve out a market of being the supplier of vehicles to schools. The owner of Sugarloaf Ford feels that that's something that he can do as kind of his service to education. So he's giving us a $2,000 price break because we are a school. And the van last year listed for $45,000. So someone else eats that first year of depreciation. And it was a leased vehicle, so we know that we've got all the maintenance records. It was well cared for.
Okay. So. Make a motion. Motion by Joe. Second by Ron. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval on second quarter board pay. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second by Joe. Discussion.
And everyone's checked this over to make sure you're not shorted a meeting you attended?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Policies, first reading, addition of 620. Again, this is just first reading. You have questions? I'm sure Ron or Michaeline would be willing to guide you through any of that. I recommend somebody.
We're going to be talking next time about with policy 614, 618, and 620. Those are, 614 was a policy that was rescinded, but we didn't have a testing plan or procedure policy. And it was rescinded because it just talked about the profile of learning and it had outdated language as far as the testing we actually did. And so now they went through and updated it so it does align with academic standards and it does align with the testing in the computer-adapted testing that we're giving. So we need to have a policy as far as the roles and responsibilities again. That's why that went on there and back again. 618 and 620 are policies that allow for us to either waive some requirements if a student is showing that they're doing a more rigorous course of study. And then the 620 is called credit for learning. And that one specifies more as far as the PSEO and ensuring that we are following the policy as far as granting credit to outside learning.
Okay. Thank you. Announcements or any events?
Arlie Ergy's funeral was last week and typically we don't bring up funerals at board meetings, but Arlie could have had a resolution very similar to Shelley Jervis when he retired. Arlie did so much for this school and I just want to publicly state how much we appreciate it, Arlie, in the school and how much he will be missed.
Any other? Meetings and committee updates. I know tonight you guys had a policy meeting.
Well, Ron added 620 and then Corinne told you the basis for, we discussed policies 618 and 620. She's going to be reaching out to the principals who Rick attended the polit- the meeting and gave us good input, but Angela and Todd need to take a look at this policy and write, Ron.
Yeah, they need to administrate some of these things, so they need to be sure that that's something that they can do and have the protocol to do it.
I think actually, these two we weren't going to put on for second reading and approval until a month from now.
Right.
But will the remainder of the list be approved at the August 2nd meeting or?
One through seven will be on for second reading on August 2nd. And then eight and nine will be on for second reading August 16th. And so that really gives the principals and me time to dig into what those policies really mean for us.
So that's why we added the other one so that there'd be more time for you to look at it and I can be back.
Okay, so we'll get something back from them at the first meeting and then we'll follow up. And then negotiations, we had a meeting, we'll talk about that, something happen later. Maybe that was it for committee meetings, boards, superintendent, anything there?
Well, the, Ann put in the thank you from the city of Houston. Went Houston High School, went around town and did cleanup. The city of Houston thanked us for doing that.
Cool. Edit? Okay, so at this time we're in a post. Our meeting for negotiation strategy and we'll, as Corinne said earlier, we'll return and open up a meeting.
And one thing that, and I'm for an event, I forgot, I just looked at podium. We've got our site visit, MNVA's site visit was coming up on Thursday of this week. So I will be reporting out on that August 2nd.
And you, you have anything to bring back from your, out east?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're not at a trip.
Well, Indianapolis for three days of meetings with K-12 and it, the company focus and really is a student-first focus now. And they're redoing the middle school platform and by next year will have redone to what they're calling summit courses that are adaptive and really an upgrade from what they have now. So it's more like the high school courses. It will be, the students will have a chance to test out of things, the students will have a chance to really dig into some things and there will be some, when Deb was talking about the multi-tiered systems of support, the multi-tiers are going to be built right into that curriculum.
So is this going to give us a competitive advantage in a competitive online world and how is, how are we going to make potential families aware of that and in marketing?
K-12's marketing is really stepping up this year too. And so that.
Is it paying more money, is that what's happening or different?
And it's a different focus and it's, they're putting more ads in, in radio and the selective TV ads. So those people that are more likely to have children in their homes and children who are into like Discovery Channel. And so it's for pinpointed marketing, the types of kids that we want, the kids that are inquisitive and looking at, I know I had a kid at home, her favorite channel was the History Channel. She ended up being a history manager. But it was.
Kevin, you have any questions on it or? You have a lot of history with that arena. You have any, you were there, correct?
Yeah, we both went. We were in a separate breakout room. They had, I ran the operations portion with the ops managers from the region. So we talked about entirely different things than Corinne had with the head of the school. No, we just did a lot of best practice sharing.
This is the schools.
Yeah, talked about processes. Lisa actually presented on tracking withdrawals. That's something a lot of K-12 schools face is when students leave, you know, sometimes they don't always enroll somewhere else and they hit our grad rate, report card thing. And so, but MNVA does a really good job preventing that in the region. So she did a best practice this year and what they do here, just kind of showcase that. And then I had ops managers from other schools do the same things, things that they're doing well at their schools.
And is K-12 willing to financially support these initiatives to change things, curriculum and tracking and reporting or, I mean, are we just sort of saying who's doing more for the same amount and we'll share those good ideas? I mean, are you really, are they really there for us?
Well, that's for something. I mean, in that specific case, I mean, it's Lisa and the office folks that are doing the tracking of the withdrawals.
Thank you, I'm just playing.
James.
Oh, finance.
Yes, the finance person assigned to MNVA will actually be coming to MSBA.
On a site visit?
On a site visit. So that will be the end of August. So it's, that also was really a breath of fresh air to have a finance person that wants to dig in and understand that as a finance. And it's someone that sounds like he's going to stay in the company for a while, which continuity would be lovely.
It'd be nice for the online committee to meet with him. Yeah, I was going to say maybe that'd be a good time to set up a meeting, a family meeting.
Sure. Okay.
I was just going to add, you know, Corinne mentioned that new line of curriculum we're rolling out. We could have somebody come and demo that for the online committee too. They do that for, they've done that for a couple of school boards, I've seen it.
A good idea.
That'd be great. In fact, that might be good for the whole board instead of just the committee.
Sure.
Yeah, do it as a presentation at the board.
Okay.
We can talk to Sarah about that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? So now we're going to close meeting for negotiation.